It's six o'clock. I will call the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two EDA meeting to order.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda with the changing, switching number three and number four. So the EDA minutes are first.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With those changes. All right, approval of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two EDA meeting minutes? Any discussion changes? If none, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve EDA minutes from April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here.
I abstain.
All right, two abstentions. Motion carries. All right, item number four, Finley Engineering Broadband Analysis Gap Report.
Oh, I skipped one.
Oops. Do I not have the new? I apologize. I just printed out. Oh, I'm sorry. I printed it out at home and I had the wrong one on top. My mistake. All right. So, City Council Special Meeting, call to order an agenda adoption.
I'll call the City Council Meeting to Order, Special City Council Meeting.
I'll make the motion to adopt.
There is no agenda. So all I have to do is call, call meetings.
I'll circle.
And then?
That's it.
You vote or we don't? Okay. All right, excellent. All right, now on to the Finley Engineering Broadband Analysis Gap Report.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Chris Connashney with Finley Engineering. We are a telecommunications consulting engineering firm. We're headquartered in Lamar, Missouri, but we do have offices throughout the Midwest. I bought a slate in Minnesota office, which is kind of down in the Worthington Marshall area. And this is something that we've been working with, Jack, here at the city with for a couple of months now. We partner with CCG on these studies because us as a, as a engineering firm, we really understand what it takes to build, design, and, and kind of operate these networks. And I'll let Doug kind of describe his role in the study and that will kind of show you why we make a good team here.
Sure, this is Doug Dawson. I'm the President of CCG Consulting. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Yeah, my role in the study, first I wrote the report. And then I also did the financial analysis and I did all the other market research. And so pretty much everything that wasn't engineering, I did all the rest. And so, so we're here today to tell you what we found and to answer all of your questions. You all had sent us some written questions, which were great, so we will address all those tonight. I don't know if you want to just jump right into it, Chris? We've got a PowerPoint that we created.
We can kind of run through the PowerPoint, I think, if Jack, you want to bring that up. And then we'll kind of be brief here and just kind of save more time for that Q and A. It seems like there was a lot of questions. So I'll kind of start here. The purpose of the study, the city issued an RFP and selected Finley and CCG to perform the feasibility study. And the primary purpose was to kind of understand the existing broadband and infrastructure within the city and then to determine the feasibility and cost of building a larger citywide fiber network. Next slide. So a little bit on this, on the existing infrastructure here. The first thing we always do with these studies is really try to take as much stock as we can as to what the existing conditions are. We don't try to tailor, you know, we don't try to cam these things in any fashion. We try to understand what's all at play here before we, we even really start putting pencil and paper. There's two major providers in the city. It's primarily CenturyLink with a little bit of Frontier in the northeast corner. They're providing all their services via fiber-backed, what's called DSL, twisted paracopper. That all came out of the, you know, telephone industry. And you'll kind of see that here in a, in a map we have coming up. The second and probably the most dominant provider in the city is Midco or Midcontinent. They're kind of a regional cable operator through Minnesota, Iowa, Dakotas. And that's kind of their footprint. And they operate a HFC or hybrid fiber coax network that delivers broadband services over a coaxial cable. These networks were originally built to deliver video service back in the eighties and early nineties. And then with the rise of broadband and implementation of what's called DOCSIS systems, they were able to deliver broadband over those systems. There's a little bit of fiber in the city provided by MetroNet. We believe that that's primarily high-value customers such as cell towers, larger businesses, banks, things of that nature. There's also two fixed wireless broadband providers in the area. Just a little bit on fixed wireless. That just means that there's a fixed antenna on a tower and a fixed radio attached to the house or residence or business or what have you. It's not a mobile service where one of those devices is stationary. Typically fixed services offer a little better throughput and more reliability than, than a mobile network. We also found a few residents that were using satellite and/or those cellular mobile broadband systems throughout the city. The monopoly issue, this is something that is not unique to East Bethel. A lot of people, broadband kind of lives in this gray world of it's not technically a utility, but when you think about how the services are built and the expense, they kind of end up being monopolies in most cases. And that's definitely the issue here. Midco provides service to almost the entire city. I believe out of the four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine, I think, locations, there was only three hundred and thirty-eight that were not served by Midco in the mapping that we, we applied. They do have a few small projects to expand that service through Artoff and some, some development areas that they're going to go into. And that would cut that number down to just under a hundred and ninety. Midco is unique amongst the carriers and the cable providers in that they are one of the first that stood up and said they're getting away from, from coaxial deployments. You know, Charter, Comcast, all those, they still seem to rely purely heavily on, on hybrid fiber coax nodes as a cost savings measure, but Midco has stated that the majority of their deployments in two thousand and twenty-two and then pretty much everything two thousand and twenty-three and beyond will be pure fiber-to-the-home deployments. And that is the case with those a hundred and twenty-seven locations there. We don't know a timeline for those deployments beyond the next one to two years. So, you know, by the end of two thousand and twenty-three, we would expect to see those done. And mostly that's a timing of how those developments come in and fill out from our talks with them. Doug, I'll let you jump in here.
Sure. We had a business survey and we also called and talked to some of those businesses. The businesses that use Midco said they were basically happy. The really only number one complaint they had was occasional outages. And they said that the, the service sometimes bogged down a little bit for an hour or two in the middle of the day every once in a while. For the most part, they were satisfied with it. Some of the, some of the businesses that have CenturyLink were not very happy. And interestingly, all those businesses said they didn't feel like they had any choice of competitive services, which was a little odd for the people with CenturyLink because they mostly could have changed to Midco. The, the prices were amazingly different. We saw, we saw several businesses with almost exactly the same service that were charged hundreds of dollars more than another business. And then that sort of comes back to the fact that Midco and CenturyLink both don't have a standard price for businesses. They sort of go in and negotiate. And, and it's really according to the salesperson that you get hold of. And some businesses are paying way too much money for their broadband. And some folks are getting it really cheap, so it really doesn't make any sense. But, but the price differences I saw here were more drastic than I've seen in a while. All the businesses we talked to were also, also live there. And what they all told us, we didn't really do a direct study of residential broadband. That wasn't in the RFP, but, but we know that that's an issue there. And so we talked to them all about their home usage. And the really big message we got was that the usage seems to vary in different parts of town. Some, some parts of town have very good service, other parts of town have really terrible speeds in the residential. And that's not unusual because, you know, Midco didn't build this network. They bought it from a company that built it back in the seventies. And what you have over years is the neighborhoods that are oldest, the wires are starting to get old. The systems were originally built to deliver cable TV, so they were really not configured with broadband in mind. And so back twenty years ago when they started putting broadband in, a lot of them simply were not configured very well for it. When they upgraded to the latest speeds, the DOCSIS three dot one, they probably didn't do that very well because of all those older problems. And so it's, it's not very, it's very typical to see neighborhoods where you'll have some neighborhoods literally getting three and four times the speeds of other neighborhoods. And that's obviously what we think drove you to do this study. It's pretty, you know, it's very incredibly frustrating when you live in one of the bad neighborhoods. And it's really not all that bad when you live in the good ones, right? The other issue with, with residential broadband was the upload speeds on Midco are really pretty terrible. And I'll show you a, a map here in a second to talk about that. And, and that never was a problem until the beginning of the pandemic. And now when we're doing Zoom calls and people are working from home, all of a sudden, we, for the first time as a country, we noticed the broadband and upload speeds are very important. And the Midco network is, is not very different than other cable networks. If anything, it's a little slower than most of them. And that's really what probably the largest problem is. Next slide. So this is a map that, that comes from nationwide speed test data. This combines both Midco and CenturyLink. But because almost everybody has Midco, these are largely Midco speeds. And so what you can see on speed tests, and, and these represent many, many speed tests. It's not one person at each location. It's an average for each of the parts of town. And the one thing you noticed on, at least at the speed test level, is the speeds are not all that different. The upload speeds are terrible. They're ten megabits and down. And, and, you know, the FCC right now is talking about upload speed should be at least twenty megabits. And so that, that alone is causing a lot of problems. On average, the download speeds, again, are not that bad. So now we do know that the, the speeds on CenturyLink generally are, are not bad. But in your town, what we found was CenturyLink has two options of how to deploy their DSL. They have the old, original historic way where they use one pair of copper. Those have pretty poor speeds, you know, we're seeing ten and fifteen megabits download speeds, very terrible. But at least parts of the city there, we know that they're deploying two pairs of, of copper. And, and as far as CenturyLink goes, you all have about the best CenturyLink system you could have because of the two pairs, which means there's homes getting twenty and thirty, even occasionally forty megabits. And, and again, it could be as fast as fifty, but those wires are getting very old and that service is getting worse every year. And, and at some point, you know, they're going to back away from that. You know, so, so the speeds are, are interesting. None of these averages are anywhere near what Midco says they're selling. Midco tells you the speeds are one to two hundred megabits on average. Obviously, they're not that good. So, so that, you know, it's, it's, you know, this is a very good demonstration that speeds are not nearly what they ought to be in the town. The entire network is sort of old and sluggish, quite honestly. Back to you, Chris, to talk about the design, so.
Sure, next slide, please. So when we started looking at the network and, and what we wanted to, to kind of put out there as, as a solution, given that ninety-five plus percent of the, the community was served already, it didn't really make sense to look at just those one hundred and eighty-eight locations. That network is so small, that's really a, a couple-month extension for a provider that would, that would come in here. And really, we tried to widen the lens a little bit. When we look at who's, you know, really building fiber in these bigger networks in Minnesota, it's, it's the smaller independent companies. And I think we had to go about thirty miles in one direction to find somebody that has a track record of building a lot of fiber out. So unfortunately, you know, we don't have a lot of, of good partners, like off the top of our head. So we wanted to kind of leave that aside as a small expansion and just look at the whole city to kind of encapsulate the whole problem. The other reason is because, as Doug said, those speed tests are kind of poor. And it, it just really made sense to look at the whole city. We only looked at a fiber-to-the-home network. When we think about what other technologies are out there with, with fixed wireless and 5G and some of this other stuff, those are all great things where they fit. The terrain, you know, the tree cover in the area, all those things inhibit wireless networks. And, you know, for as much as we stand up here and say the speeds are poor on this Midco network, it's going to be really hard to replicate those speeds at the density and number of subscribers that you guys have within the city. So really fiber is kind of the only way forward. Some of the advantages here, it does represent the initial, the largest initial upfront investment, but it's got the longest network life. So through just replacing electronics on the ends, you know, you could realistically expend, expect this network to last fifty years, seventy years, or even longer than that. This gives you all sorts of capabilities in the future, whether it's work from home, attracting new businesses, you know, you guys as an EDA. I, I don't think I really have to spend a lot of time explaining how, how many the benefits are that fiber can bring to your community. When we were kind of mapping this stuff out, we looked at a few different definitions of broadband. And we really settled on that most recent one from the NTIA and the USDA that's defining that as, as a hundred by twenty, that being a hundred megabits down and twenty megabits up. So as Doug was saying, those Zoom calls, when you're pushing your video or, or trying to share your screen, that's, that's that twenty up. And that's where a lot of non-fiber type of networks really, really struggle. Next slide. We built all of this data into a GIS model. So if the city partners with a provider and comes to us tomorrow or ten years down the line, we have a giant model that has all this data packed into it. So if you say, I wanted to just look at this little piece or this little neighborhood or what about those one hundred and eighty-eight locations? You know, usually within like a day, I can carve that out and, and re-present those numbers. We took the tack of kind of wrapping our arms around the whole city and building one giant model. And that way it's easier for us to go back and carve those pieces out later. We sent two guys up here with a truck, two of our more senior outside plant guys, and they drove every single road in the city and took notes. I should have grabbed a screenshot of all the little chicken scratches on the paperwork. One of the things that really stood out is, is you guys have a beautiful city here, but it represents some unique challenges. You have a very large square mileage footprint. And with that, a lot of miles of roads. You can see there's quite a large number of road miles that would need to be built here for those four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine passings. To contrast, we've worked on a few cities recently that are, that are two and three times that population with less than half of that mileage of construction needed. So this is kind of almost a hybrid rural and, and town build at the same time. Another thing that popped up over and over in those field notes that we took is there's a lot of water issues. And those definitely need to be paid attention to and, and the right of ways are narrow here. So, you know, as I was driving in on, on your main road out here, you see a lot of farms in like five, ten acre, you know, beautiful farm places and, and rural settings. Normally, the method of construction there is a quad track plow. That's probably twenty foot wide and you, you know, you vibratory plow in that cable, that's not going to work here. Your, your ditches and your roadways are, are not really conducive to that in a lot of cases. So what we're looking at is a lot of directional bore. And that is great for the homeowners because it's less disturbance and less tearing up of the area, but it's going to lead to a lot higher costing and pricing in the network. We built this all with an XGS pond network. Pond is kind of an overall type of architecture, which we'll get to in the next slide here. But it's basically just a lot of passive elements and it's kind of the most bang for your buck in, in network technology there. So I won't, I won't waste any more time on that. Next slide. This is kind of just a high-level stick diagram. And basically what I want you to take away from this is, is there's one central office or sometimes you'll hear it called the data center. That's where the core electronics are stored and housed, and we would only need one for the whole city. From there, lasers would shoot out of those shelves through the fiber, through what's called passive splitters, hence the pond or passive optical. And it would be split many times to keep our cable sizes lower. And there would be one fiber from that central office to every local convergence cabinet and then out to each individual home. That technology is capable of ten gigabits by ten gigabits today. So well more than what you would need for, you know, the immediate future. And then there's, manufacturers have road maps to forty and fifty and even a hundred gigabit pond down the line. So there's no worry about obsolescence here with the network. Next slide, please. Key design points. We tried to look at, you know, construction for construction. There's a lot of aerial in the, in the area. However, most of that's really short poles and it's going to create clearance issues. And by the time we deal with all the make-ready and problems associated with that, if a new provider were to come in, they would, they would almost surely just bury the cable. If Midco or CenturyLink were to overbuild this, they could do what's called overlap on their existing plant. So the idea there is, is, you know, Midco has a messenger line, a steel line, and then their cable is wrapped around that today. They could overlap fiber on there and it wouldn't create any new clearance issues. So that would be one way by, like, teaming up with an existing provider that has those aerial assets that you could bring the cost down of the network quite a bit. And then last note here, we also provided some room in there for future growth and expansion. We realized that where you guys are located, you're kind of on the edge of the urban sprawl of the cities. And, and like it or not, you know, your population's going to grow here probably in the coming years. Next slide. These are some of the maps that we developed. Some of it's kind of hard to make out here, but this is the old telephone exchange boundaries. So, you know, all that orange-ish, yellowish is all CenturyLink territory with just a little bit of green from Frontier. And I believe that's the Y-only exchange there. Next slide. This is a map from the Minnesota Department of Economic Development. This was our primary source of data for, for laying out speeds and, and who, which providers were where. The orange is considered served, so that would be one hundred by twenty. I will caveat this all with saying that this is all provider-reported data. It's really the only, you know, metrics that we have, unfortunately, is provider-reported data. There is a new system coming out through the FCC here in the next few months that will hopefully be a more accurate source of this, but that's going to have some growing pains. So really everything in those orange areas, you know, by almost any standard definition of, of grant program out there today would be ineligible because they do have that one hundred by twenty provider in there. And believe it or not, the rest of that area is where those three hundred and, I forget my numbers now, three hundred and eighty-eight customers are located at. Next slide, please. And this is just kind of a, taking that conceptual network and laying it over the, the city limits. The green Pentagon there in the center, that would be, you know, kind of a suggested location for the electronics. And then you'll see backbone routes that would haul traffic from those diamonds, which are those local convergence cabinets where those passive splitters live and haul that all back to the, to central office. And next slide. And I'll let you take it from here, Doug.
All right, next slide. This is a summary of the costs. And this particular set of costs is at a sixty percent customer penetration rate, meaning the sixty percent of the people in town would buy broadband on the network. The cost goes up if the penetration's a little higher, it goes down if the penetration's a little lower because one of the costs is connecting homes. So that number changes. As you can see, to go to the very bottom, it, it works out to be seven thousand dollars for every one of the passings in town. And as soon as we saw that number, we knew this was going to be a really challenge to find a solution. What we find is that economically, if you can get a network for around three thousand dollars or under, that you can probably build it without any grant money and make it work. And so this is more than twice that number. Chris, Chris really put his finger on it earlier because if Midco built the town because they already have wires on all the poles, they can probably be less than that three thousand dollar number. They could build it for way, way less than what you can build it because they would literally, they, they already have all the right of ways. They would go along in a very short period of time and stick their new wires on top of the old wires and be done with it. And so they can afford to do this upgrade. You know, the question we'll, we'll talk about later is will they do it? But, you know, the real big cost is the fiber. That's, as Chris said, it's that problem of the current poles are too short. Some of them literally, you know, when you get close to some of the water places, they're leaning a little bit. I mean, a lot of them would have to be replaced. Or if you bury it because of the narrow right of ways, you know, you've got to, you've got to go through the expensive method of, of running it underground. And so that, that number is really what kills it. The drops also are expensive because in the same, for the same reasons. If you, if you bury the fiber, you have to bury the drops. That's a more expensive way to do drops. Again, you know, CenturyLink or, or, or Midco could do drops for less than this. The other costs are pretty much the same no matter who does it. The electronics are the electronics and, you know, that's just what they cost. You know, nobody has a real advantage there. But, but the seven thousand dollar number is really a real killer. It's just like, you know, normally when we see a number like that, that's the kind of numbers we see in rural Minnesota. And, and in those places, they're able to get grants. But because of the, again, Midco's not great, but their speeds are good enough to stop you from getting grants. And so, you know, they're, they're not good, but they're not bad. And so, and so there's these thresholds of, they would have to be under a hundred and twenty to get grants. And, and, and they swear that they're faster than that. And they can deliver speeds faster than that. They do have, they have, they will sell a gigabit product, which in this network probably doesn't deliver a gigabit, probably delivers six hundred megabits, but that's way fast enough to not get the grants. So, next slide. And so, you know, without a grant, the first column there shows, you know, I mean, over twenty years, if you build it at those costs and got sixty percent of the people on the network, you'd lose twenty-seven million dollars. I mean, that's just obviously, there's simply no good business plan there. And I kicked the tires on this. I think I created something like forty different scenarios to try to find any kind of a solution. But it all comes back to that asset cost number. What I've shown on the right is in order to make this work, you'd have to get nineteen million dollars of grants. And, and there's, there may be some minor grants available, but they're, they're ways, way, way smaller than that. So, so, you know, the chances of you being able to finance doing this just look very slim. Next slide. Again, I kept all the tires on all the variables, penetration rates, interest rates, you know, the length of the term. We played with the prices. You know, no combination of those would, would come, some, you know, if all those swung your way, it wouldn't be a twenty-seven million dollar loss, but it would still be a large one. So, you know, we could probably, in a best scenario, get that down to a fifteen million dollar loss. It's a very big improvement, but it's not good enough, so. Next slide. So the real strategic questions is, I mean, Midco just made their announcement and, and at the end of January. And they said they're gonna convert their entire cable companies to fiber. And if they do that, you would have, all of a sudden you would go to these tremendous speeds. They would be the same up and down. The pricing would probably be the same as today, but the, but the performance would go from today's performance to world-class performance. You know, the question is, you know, they're, they're headquartered in the Dakotas. And so the, the, you know, they're gonna spend $500 million this year, uh, but, you know, that's not gonna get them out of Dakotas. And so the question is, are they, are they really gonna do everywhere? You know, because they own a lot of these markets like yours. They're scattered all over the states. I mean, Minnesota alone, I think they own, you know, 30 or 40 of them. So the question is, are they really gonna come to you? And, and if so, when are they gonna do it? So that's, you know, that's the million dollar question. The next real question to ask is, is, you know, are there holes in the broadband coverage? Are there parts of town where the coverage is so bad that maybe we could justify grants? And so, pardon me, it's, it's allergy season here. There, and there's ways that we can look into that. The way to do that would be to get residents there to do a lot of speed tests. Because we can, if we really got, you know, out of the 4,000 people, if we could get 1,000 or 1,500 speed tests, we could start pinpointing if there's any neighborhoods where the speeds are truly terrible. Now, before we would get a grant, what would probably happen is Midco would come in and fix them so they wouldn't qualify for grants anymore. But that's not such a bad thing. They would finally go in and fix the problems on the network. But the kind of stories that we heard about residential coverage is there's, there's gotta be some neighborhoods that are truly terrible. One of the most interesting dilemmas you have, and everybody in the country has, if you go back to the speed test map I showed you, that that, the upload speeds nowhere were faster than 10 megabits. And that doesn't meet that, that test of 20 megabits. However, none of the grant offices are, they're not giving grants based on upload speeds. They're really only giving grants based on download speeds. Unfortunately, that's, they should be because if the, if the test is 120, Midco is clearly not meeting the 20. But, you know, that, that's the way that they're all interpreting the grants. You know, if there was a solution, uh, you know, are you willing to put in some funding? One thing that is an interesting idea, because I'm working with a, a bunch of other cities who are in the same dilemma where they're probably, one of these days is gonna get a better network, but it could be five years from now. One of the ideas is to go to Midco and say, if we help you raise some money, will you come here a lot sooner? So that's one of the ideas to put on the table. And, and of course, it may not take all that much. They're planning to do it anyhow. And so the question is, is there a way that we can give them an incentive to get here a lot sooner to build that fiber? So, uh, next slide. So the first step is to reach out to Midco because, you know, they wouldn't tell us because, I mean, we're just consultants and they don't trust the consultants at all. They did tell us that they're upgrading. That's where Chris found out about the, the 90 places that are getting fiber. But I think the local people don't even, they can't answer the question of when the fiber's coming. I'm sure they don't know either. This is the kind of thing that companies like Midco make a plan one year at a time. And so again, they're, right now, they're very much probably gonna spend the next two or three years in the Dakotas before they ever moved to Minnesota or Iowa. But, you know, but, but, you know, if, if they stick to their original plan, they will get here. Unfortunately, you know, some other cable companies have said the same thing. And after they did their core areas, they just stopped upgrading. So there's no guarantee that they're coming. So I think as a city, you need to formally reach out to them, which really means starting with the local people and then really having conversations with the, the upper management at their headquarters and really tell them how important this is to you and that, that you guys wanna help solve the problem. Again, I think that taking those speed tests as a follow-up step here could do two things. One, it may identify areas with grants. And secondly, it would prove to Midco that some parts of town are really terrible. And maybe even if they're not gonna build fiber for four years, they might come into town this summer and fix those. And so, you know, I think it's worth taking a shot at doing that. It's not, it's not expensive to do. It's a matter of talking to everybody in town to go to their computer and take the speed test. I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't really cost much money at all to do this. You know, community outreach, you know, you know, potentially, uh, that could include an, an online survey. That might tell us a lot more about these same issues. Again, not very expensive to put a survey online. And then, you know, another, the final issue would be to look at all your, your policies. Is there anything you can do to change your ordinances so that, to do it, to make it even easier for somebody like Midco to come and upgrade? And we only said Midco here, but, you know, CenturyLink is also a possibility. CenturyLink has said recently that they, uh, what they did is they sold off about 19 of their states of copper assets. And, and they kept Minnesota and, and the places west of there. And I think that they're probably gonna start pouring money into fiber as well. And it's very possible that they could be induced to also build fiber in town. Because I would think they would look at you and your demographics as a, as an attractive market. In your case, they actually have more incentive to do that than Midco. Midco already has all the customers. If CenturyLink built fiber, they could actually get a lot of the customers back. And so they, they certainly would be worth talking to. And I apologize for not putting them on the map, but, but it's only become recently apparent. We follow all these companies all the time. And I think that after, now that they're selling all those other properties off, I think that they're probably interested in maybe doing that. A, a year ago, they would not have had that conversation. And I think now it's probably also worth reaching out to them. Yes, Chris said, we also looked around and, and there's really no independent telephone companies close to you. The closest ones are, are 30 and 40 and 50 miles away. And unfortunately, if they come to town, they're looking at that $30 million bill number. They don't have any magic that they can bring to do that any cheaper. So, so I don't think that we can entice another company to come here and do it. The, the numbers just don't work, which all again comes back to the, you know, the water issues and the narrow right of ways and, and the older short poles. And so that, that's simply a problem for anybody who wants to do it. There are some interesting interim solutions that are starting to hit the market. It's certainly not gonna replace fiber or cable, but Chris had mentioned cellular broadband, the 5G stuff. And that's just now being rolled out. And that's actually not a bad product. For instance, T-Mobile has a product that's right ranges between 100 and 200 megabits download. And they sell it for a flat $50 unlimited usage. It doesn't solve everybody. It's got a faster upload than Midco by quite a bit. It's been averaging 30 and 40 megabits upload. But, you know, 10 years from now, that's not gonna be at all adequate. That's not a long-term solution, but it could be an interesting solution for folks who are, if you're in a neighborhood that's really struggling with Midco. So it's certainly worth, they say that there's four companies doing that. T-Mobile, there's a brand new company, Dish Networks, uh, is gonna be the fourth major cable company and they're building nationwide. They're coming to the Twin Cities by June, uh, but I don't know how long it'll take them to get out to your sort of towns. But, you know, they're worth talking to. They're gonna be coming, the matter is when they come in. They're, they're required by, by the FCC to actually build 97% of the company, country within four years. So they will be coming as well. Verizon and AT&amp;T are also doing it. They're not being nearly as aggressive as the other two, but you may end up with all four of them in the town at some point. So, so there are some other solutions. They're not, they're not gonna solve the problem, but they might relieve the problem. So, um, next slide is just our contact information. We can either open up the questions maybe first. You all had asked some very interesting questions, which we'd like to talk about. And so, you know, however you wanna approach this.
So do we, in our packet, we have question, a variety of questions. Do we wanna take questions from the council and the EDA or read some of these? I'm not sure what the most effective way to proceed. Were these questions provided to Finley and CCG?
Yes, Finley wrote the answers to those questions in red. The questions were submitted by the EDA from our previous meetings. That was the list that was given by our members. So they did provide a written response, which was indicated in those red comments.
Any other questions from us here?
Yeah.
Go for it.
As I look at, at East Bethel as opposed to where my other house is, everything in East Bethel seems to be buried and everything in Waukan by everything I'm talking about, the cable TV, cable coax. Is there a huge price difference between the cost of putting it in aerial as opposed to plowing it in?
If, if everything goes right, aerial can be about 30 to 40% cheaper on a per foot basis.
Which makes sense.
But I caveat that with everything goes right. So if you, if you have to put in new poles, if you have to, you know, the, the poles we noted that had infrastructure on them were generally very short and very poor shape. So, you know, it, you would have to do a pretty in-depth study to, to figure out how viable those are, who owns them, you know, all those sorts of things.
I mean, it could end up costing you more to put it on poles.
Yeah, Doug, Doug and I have, Doug and I have done plenty of studies where people thought, oh, we've got all aerial networks. This'll be great. We, we did one community in, in southwest Colorado. All cap rock, very hard to drill. And their port, their poles were in such poor shape, it was about a push to, to do aerial versus redo all their existing electric plant poles. And the solution we actually found there was to put all new pole lines in and, and only use those poles for communications fiber. So it, it just kinda, you know, it's an option that's out there that we kinda wanna throw out there, but it's kind of, to really drill down and nail those costs is kind of beyond the scope of where we're at here. So we kind of opted for the worst-case situation here.
And, and to answer your concern, there's not gonna be enough savings there to make this work. It would be better, maybe, not enough better. So, yeah.
Can I have a comment or a, I guess a question? What, what would be the best way to go about enticing, let's call it CenturyLink or Midco, to make them more willing to look at our area? What would be an enticement? Well, CenturyLink could take the Midco customers back, but what would be an incentive for Midco?
Believe it or not, you won't, this sounds too simple. The best way is to ask them. Because every carrier has a different set of, of, of things that they find important. I would guess with Midco's case, that it would take some money to entice them. You know, it may not be a lot of money. They may say, you know, we're gonna get to your town, we're gonna pay for it all out of our own pocket. But if you gave us a million dollars, we'd move you way up the list. And so, you know, they're not gonna ask you to pay for the network because they know that you can and won't do that. But, you know, but, but I think in their case, giving them money. CenturyLink might be a different case. It might be, with CenturyLink, it might be a matter of making a good business case to them about how ready people are in the town to move over to fiber. And I think the way that we would wanna do that would be to do that survey I mentioned. Show them that people really wanna have a better broadband option. And so, because that would give them a good feeling that, that people would change over if they built the fiber. And so, and so that might be the easiest way for them. But in both cases, first thing to do is to say, get a meeting with, with someone high enough off that they can give you a good answer and say, what would it take to get you to come here? And let them give you their list. It's not gonna be a complicated list. It's gonna be something like I just mentioned, so.
And, and I'd add to that to, you know, kinda showing them the study. And if we were to do like a speed test or something to show that, that this is the state, you know, really these providers are trying to make a business case out of this whole thing at the end of the day. And if you show them, you know, poor service in an area, that probably translates towards a little better take rate, thus more revenue. You can kinda use all those factors to build that case.
Well, and you've also got the story that, again, you're on the fringe of the metro. When we look out 10 to 20 years, you're gonna, you're gonna grow a lot. I mean, I don't think there's any way that you can't, that, that metro is just growing too much to not get to you. And so, you know, it's like, you know, get on the ground level so that you build today and you're gonna make all that money in the future. So it's, it's building the story to them. Unfortunately, you all probably are nuts about talking about getting the growth because most places aren't. But fact is, it's, it is part of your story. And, and so painting a picture for them is also a, is a good way to, to get them interested. You know, the folks at, at the headquarters of both of those places don't know your town from Adam. So we, you know, you gotta introduce who you are to them and even get them to come out. Because, you know, that, you know, they've, they've not ever, they have no idea what your town is like, so.
Does it make sense in your, in your follow-up steps? Does it make sense to do a widespread or try to coordinate a widespread speed test to determine the grant funds that might be available to couple that with our conversations with Midco?
Absolutely. And I think that's maybe one of the most powerful things you could do to entice Midco. Through this study, they know that you're looking at the issue. They know that there's a problem. Taking something like a list of speed tests to say, here's what you say there is, here's what we're seeing, we need to do better. Or we're gonna look elsewhere. You know, not that you're outright threatening them, but just say like, hey, if, if you're not gonna help us, we're gonna look towards grants or however we can to tackle this issue. I think that would be a pretty, you know, powerful statement to them.
Yeah, it, it's a case of the squeaky wheel gets the attention here. And, and, you know, their local guys will tell them they have problems in the town. But those speed tests specifically identify it and then they can't deny it. And then you can have a real conversation about, how do we fix this? And so the speed tests are extremely powerful. You know, they're not a bad provider. They, they wanna do a good job. There are, there are companies that don't wanna do a good job, but they're actually one who has, you know, they're proud of, of their company. And, and so, you know, I think that if you can paint a picture to them that there's parts of your town that are just miserable, you know, they might, long before they build fiber, come in and fix some of them for you. That's, that'd be a great first step, so.
This is.
So I think the speed tests are really a great idea. Again, the hard work is at your end to talk people into taking them. I can put an online speed test up for you in a half an hour. You have to go get people to actually go and take the test, so.
Yeah, I mean, quite honestly, this is probably the first time we've ran across the Midco area that's had, you know, this level of complaints on the service. I mean, generally, they do do a, a pretty fair job. And I think a lot of that's, again, back to how your city's constructed and kind of just the population density and the road structure. When this was built back in the 17s, or 70s and 80s, it probably wasn't built to accommodate the number of customers that it has on those nodes today. So, you know, maybe some copper rehab, you split some nodes, you can start to, to, you know, amplify your performance on the network.
Yeah, as I said, Midco normally does a good job. This is, you know, they bought a network here that's not great. That, you know, they bought, there's some places that are way worse than yours they bought. But, but, you know, they bought pretty much everything in sight is what they did, so.
I made the statement that, uh, on the level of networks at Midco, this is one there, there's lots of complaints coming from this network versus others. Would you have any information, anything that you could provide the city as comparisons or anything that we could then bring to Midco and say, well, hey, look at this?
Yeah, I think really it's gonna go back to that speed test and just, we could kinda compare that against some of the other empirical data from the studies that we've done in the past and just say, you know, to Midco, here's where we normally see you and then this is what we're seeing here.
Are the complaints about speed?
And the, and the second thing to do would be to do the online survey at the same time because then people could actually tell us how they feel about it. And so, you know, that, that adds up to be, the two of those give you really detailed evidence, so. If you're gonna ask people to do one, ask them to do both at the same time, so.
And, and then as, I think you were kinda getting to what were the complaints.
What, what have you, anecdotally, what, what have you heard about the complaints?
So Doug had kind of alluded to it that, you know, we didn't do a formal residential survey. So we were kind of getting these anecdotal things from, from the business customers. And it seemed like that, you know, it was generally kinda sluggish, especially at peak times. You know, that kinda five to eight, nine o'clock at nighttime. And then cable, cable networks are kind of, you know, notoriously somewhat unreliable. You gotta go unplug it and plug it back in to get it going. It's just, just those kinda things. And then, um, upload speeds, you know, Zoom calls, things like that tended to kinda struggle a little bit. When we heard those things, we go back and we look at those speed tests. When we heard those things, we go back and we look at those speed tests, that nationwide speed test data. And when we look at that from other markets from Midco, we usually see, you know, it's hard to say for sure, but we definitely see a hundred by twenty plus. You know, we probably see a couple hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred megabit download and then, you know, twenty, thirty up pretty, pretty.
Yeah, we knew your network had problems as soon as we see that average uploads are only ten. That's very slow for a cable network.
Yeah.
Almost all of them are much faster than that.
All all these networks and these DOCSIS platforms and everything were were really built to optimize for download. And now that we're pushing more and more content up, that hardware and and stuff wasn't built for that. So it kind of, that's where the cracks show a little bit earlier, if you will. It's it's just, you're stressing, you know, it's like, if everybody went outside and tried to drive their car ninety miles and reversed down the interstate today, it wouldn't work because that's not how they're built, you know?
Does the, does the fact that the residential entertainment industry at home seems to be moving away from cable TV, and I've certainly recognized that, you know, obviously, Midco started out as a cable TV company and now they're an internet provider. Is there a difference in the amount of bandwidth that TV eats up against, eats up compared to streaming? Because that's from what?
That's that's two different parts of the same network. So like their over the cable TV product uses certain frequencies. Broadband uses different ones, so it's kind of riding on the same cable, but like Midco's video doesn't compete for bandwidth with their broadband services. Now, if you're coming at it from more people are streaming and and consuming more, you know, data, that that's where you see those networks bogged down at seven, eight o'clock at night. You know, it's it's kind of just this steady base load that everybody sees in the evening when it comes to that type of stuff.
Probably the most, the most illustrative example in the report that it's probably worth mentioning here. In twenty eighteen, the average US home only used about two hundred gigabytes a month. That sounds like a lot, and it is. But at the at the end of last year, at the end of twenty twenty-one, that's now up to five hundred and twenty. So it's it's gone from two hundred and eighteen to five hundred and twenty in three years. And that's what's bogging down the broadband networks. Everybody is using more, and it's not just video. It's really not just video. You know, everything you do, when you, if you work on Excel, your Excel's in the cloud. We're doing all these, you know, Zoom calls. All these things we're doing just add up. All the devices you buy for your house now use broadband. My bought, my wife bought a nine dollar thermometer yesterday and it uses the internet. It's like, are you kidding me?
Your appliance is doing it.
It's like, are you kidding me? What the heck does that thing do on the internet?
You know.
But, you know, we're using a huge amount more broadband than we used to, and it really adds up. And and so, you know, Midco's network is way stressed just compared to twenty eighteen. It's it's not gotten any better, but there's three times more stuff on it, so.
Their plans of, I mean, I realize that there is absolutely no timeline for when or if they would ever bring more fiber to the city, but if the assumption could be made that all their, the fiber would not be, is is your assumption that the fiber's not going directly to the home, but more to the neighborhood nodes?
Oh, no, no, they're no, they're talking about going to every home and every business. They are, they want to, they know these networks are getting old. Remember, again, this network was built in the seventies. It's nearing its end of life. And so they either have to completely rebuild it with copper, and they said, the heck with that, let's just put in fiber. So they're talking about to every home and business.
That's nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty feet of fiber figuring the four hundred and seventy-nine miles that, or the hundred and seventy-eight miles times.
Yep. Yep, I mean.
Now, now, remember, their, again, their price to build is way, it's probably way less than half of the number for you to build. So it's not, it's not quite as ugly for them to do it, but.
But it's still ugly.
It's still a big number for them, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a hundred and ninety-seven feet per user.
Yep.
Okay, and that's not counting, as a simple carpenter would say, that's not counting the drop to the home.
Right.
You know, I mean, my house is probably.
You have some pretty long drops in parts of the town.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'll point you towards the the Benton Counties and the Noble County studies where we need to build seven, eight hundred miles of fiber to service, you know, less than two thousand customers, and this will look rosy by comparison, but yeah, it's it's it, they're they're daunting numbers, but, you know, you know, if if you would have asked me before the study, you know, what I would have thought, you know, urban town-type builds in Minnesota are three to five thousand dollars a passing. And rural passings are twelve, fifteen thousand dollars on up, depending on how rural they are. And and you're you're kind of shaded more towards the town side, and that's kind of once we drove it and looked at everything, that's right where we expected to be. So don't don't get daunted by every place that doesn't have fiber in the US is looking at these kind of numbers.
Yeah, my first guess, when when you first hired us, I looked at the map and I thought it would be way less than seven thousand miles, so I was very surprised, so.
Yeah, Doug Doug pushed me very hard, and then I showed him all the construction notes and maps.
Yeah, I made him do it about three times. He had to do something wrong. No, Finley does an awesome job. It's, they did it right, so, yeah.
So so it appeared to me, taking this all in and and we've we've talked about offline, I'll be, this is quite a report, you know, it's quite an in-depth. I think for some of us, more in-depth than we thought it would be. So that's so, that's a good thing. It's also pretty realistic to say that, you know, based on the the cost feasibility that's done here, it's, you know, it's not something, you know, we're just going to go out and build fiber. So from from what discussions in the report, it would seem to be the best thing for for us as a community is 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 to let that free market work. And when Midco does come in with the fiber, you know, work with them to make sure that we get as much coverage as we can and find those incentives for them as a private entity to to make those further investments. You know, the frustration we have is with with Midco is we we've had some newer developments within the last twenty years that weren't even served by cable TV, which which is crazy, when when it goes right by the development. And it's because, you know, maybe it's because we didn't have requirements or or it wasn't incentives, but I think when this next kind of phase of of technology is is implemented by these companies and and Midco, I think we just got to be in a better position to to make sure that our, you know, get as much coverage as we can, both from availability and from bandwidth. Because it's just not going to be realistic to 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 try to finance this as a as a community. It it's definitely one of our goals. It's been one of our goals for a long time, but there's also a cost to that goal, so it's, we got to find better ways to to get this done.
And there's there's ways to to kind of chip away at that. Midco has really shifted their attitude in the last three to four years. They were kind of just content to maintain the status quo until about, when was CAF two, Doug, two thousand eighteen or nineteen? I can't remember.
Yeah, eighteen, yeah.
We really saw that that kind of spur their development because they they bought a fixed wireless company and they started tackling the outlying rural areas. We saw them string a lot of middle mile fiber and connect areas that were previously video-only and bring those DOCSIS systems and connect those communities. So we've seen way more movement out of Midco just in the past couple of years than we had previous to that. So to your.
Well, I I also think it's very promising that the hundred and twenty homes that they're adding on, theirs are all going to be fiber. So that
Yep.
The fact that they're there, because those are not, those are kind of the places that are the most rural in the city, and they're actually bringing fiber to them right now. So, I mean, they they are going to be doing fiber. Just a matter of how how soon we can talk them into doing it, so.
Yep, and and.
You know, seven years from now is not a good answer. We want it a lot faster, so.
Yeah, and and starting that relationship with them and and getting, you know, hey, what can we do for you in these areas where you want to build these fiber networks? And then tip them off, you know, hey, we have developments slated here, here, and here. You know, get fiber into those places when there's brown dirt there because, you know, as much as aerial can save, you can cut cost by half by on new developments, by getting in their open trench with the electric and some of the other utilities. So and then at some point, maybe you you build enough mass and there's enough fiber from Midco in the community that they start overbuilding some of these older neighborhoods, and you can kind of just maybe slowly build a little momentum there.
So in the same token, a a little bit of concern in terms of Midco themselves, because it seemed to me that we're kind of on the furthest eastern edge of their coverage area, where they serve.
Oh, you're about as eastern as they are, yeah.
Yeah, and their bread and butter was Dakota. I mean, they started in.
Sioux Falls. They're based in Sioux Falls.
Sioux Falls, and 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 so, I mean, we're on this edge, yet we're in the metro, so you would think it'd be more enticing for them to make more investment in this area because there's faster growth than would be in the rural area, but so it's to me, it's almost kind of the, and and what you're suggesting is to have discussions with Midco.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't hurt to ask, doesn't cost you nothing but a little time. I mean, just trying to build that relationship is is really, I think, kind of the best advice we can give you for now.
Yeah, we don't know for a fact where they're building this year because they haven't published a list, but I can guarantee you it's places like Sioux Falls. I mean, that's who's getting fiber.
They're spending, I think, half of that five hundred million in Sioux Falls to overbuild parts of that with fiber.
Yeah, that that's understandable.
Yep. They're they're in a race with VAST, the other big cable company in town, to see who can overbuild more, who falls faster. And and Sioux Falls is growing, I mean, just for as fast as the metro, I mean, Sioux Falls is just crazy.
Yeah, I went to Sioux Falls recently and it's like all new construction. It was kind of amazing, so, yeah.
Do you think any other company would be interested, whether it be Comcast or HughesNet or any up and coming company would be interested in coming out this way?
It's it's really difficult to see who that could be. I I don't know if you were here when we talked about it earlier, but we we always, if we can't find us like a very likely partner in the immediate vicinity, we try to widen our lens as much as we can and see where we could find somebody that would come in. And in Minnesota, that usually means the smaller independent providers, so, you know, Arvig is probably the biggest one that you've maybe heard of, and then it kind of just trickles off down there from there. And we had to go about thirty or forty miles to to get to that. So to think about, not, I mean, you could lease dark fiber from from probably heck, even Century Link or somebody like that and and stand up a network here, but to get people and trucks and spare parts and just infrastructure to service a city like this, it would be something a little out of left field. Yeah, I won't say that it won't happen, but, you know, in in the broadband world in general, there's kind of just money going everywhere right now through all these grant programs and and you know, people are grading opportunities very hard right now because there's there's a lot of it out there if you're a service provider.
Chris, thank you for mentioning Arvig. When we started looking into trying to improve our internet service back in twenty seventeen, Arvig seemed to be a provider that was interested in this area. Do you know if they're interested dropped off or what their intentions are?
Arvig is heavily partnered up with Midco for a lot of regional projects, so I would be very skeptical of them coming into this market without.
Again, it doesn't hurt to ask them, but.
Doesn't hurt to ask, but.
Because of all the grants, we're think they're looking in the rural areas for the next four years.
If you go on Midco's website and look at their regional fiber network and you go on Arvig's website and look at theirs, pretty much identical, so.
Okay. So they said I'll take Midco.
They and they and Midco are pretty close together.
They they share a lot of their connections, and it's good for them because they stay out of each other's way and they get a lot of diversity to, you know, North Dakota, to Sioux Falls, to Minneapolis, to all these different internet exchanges, so it builds resiliency within their network.
Personally, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the monopoly issue on this because price-wise, they're competing with streaming, you know, so that so they do have competition. I I think where their their kind of lack of competition, and they recognize it too, is is the quality of service. And and I think we've seen over the last, these five years, just a big improvement in in the way that Midco responds to both us and and to customers too, so. And how do you can't have duplicate systems out there to be competitive. It just doesn't work that way, so. I think that's just one of the hard realities that we have is that they are like utilities, so.
As a follow-up.
We didn't use the word monopoly as neg, particularly, it's really a negative. It's just the fact that for all practical purposes, they are one, right, so.
As as a follow-up to that, we've found that dealing with Midco over the past three or four years has been a night and day improvement over what it was previous to that, especially at the local level. So we're hoping that that will transfer up to the middle management and on up to the top to get some attention. We've been waiting for essentially the results of this report, and I think probably as you, everybody has indicated here, our first steps are going to be to try to develop that partnership with Midco and see what we can do together to, whether it's either offer some aid to construction in some way or whatever other incentives we can to get them to look at expanding faster than what their current plans are.
Yeah, and and we have, I can give you the contacts of the gentleman at Midco and and Century Link that we spoke to. You know, they're not, they're not the decision makers, but, you know, they operate on more of a state or multi-state level. So they they have the ability to escalate that a little, a little more quickly than than, you know, your local service techs and so.
So broader question, kind of out of the scope of this, but at the county level, the county's looking at doing basically the same type of of of
Study.
Study that that we've done, which I'm sure you're aware of.
Yes, I, we declined that RFP just based on the volume of work and the timeline that it needed to get completed.
I mean, I I think there's got, we, it's a while since we've talked about, but I think they're planning to use some of this as, some of this work that you you've done for us as part of the guideline for what they're doing. So I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, we're at, we've kind of started a trajectory here with this report. Do we wait and see where the county's going?
With their with their operation. I don't put as much hope on that as you would because in the in the realm of the county, you have a very different topography with all the water and trees than most of the county. You're you're more expensive than most other places. So so their 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 solutions are going to look different than yours. And and they're, and that's just how, that's just the fact of nature. I mean, there's nothing around, a way to get around that, so.
But I think in the same token.
I mean, I'm very familiar with the county. I did a big study for them in two thousand and nine, so, you know, we crawled all over the county, so.
The the other thing I would say there too is, is the county has different priorities than you. If the county's looking at the funding mechanisms and what's out there, they might choose to focus solely on the rural areas that don't have that kind of one hundred by twenty level. And and you could get almost completely shut out of any finding or or benefit from that. So I think, you know, what you've done here is great and and perfect for you and try to build on that as much as you can.
Well, I think it'd be worth talking to the county at least and seeing what their parameters are, what studies they are doing, because then I believe that they are doing a a mail-out to every residential address to get that information. So at a certain point, it maybe behooves to at least sit down with them and compare, see what their result results are, and maybe there's a function where we can partner with them for something, and maybe there isn't, but at least that's more information that we can bring to our game.
Jack, would that be.
Oh, no, I would agree. Getting that stuff from their mailing is important. Also, for, don't forget, they got a large pile of the ARPA funding. I mean, they could share some money with you, so, so, you know, that's certainly something worth talking about, so.
Well, and I was going to say, make sure that we're included in that mailing, even though we have our own report. Well, and I was gonna say, make sure that we're included in that mailing, even though we have our own report, make sure.
Yes, yeah, at least we've already talked about that.
The, uh, the person that was in charge, is that the county?
Friday was her last day, so, a guy by the name of Kevin Rowan, their IT department, is coordinating that until a replacement is made for Samantha. Uh, I had an email discussion with him last Friday, and, uh, we're gonna try to get together, at least to kinda try to piggyback on some of their survey work and see which direction they're going, and also, as Doug mentioned too, that they do have a lot of ARPA funds out there and see what would qualify, would qualify for that. They currently have that program now where every city in the county was designated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a fifty fifty match, so we're hoping maybe there may be some additional funds there, but, uh, I've been in contact with Kevin and we'll set up a meeting with him as soon as possible for these two two endeavors.
What was the scope of the county RFP, was it the whole county or was it, or was it just the northern part?
I believe it was the whole county, but I.
Whole county, no, they're studying the whole county, yeah.
Yeah, and and once they take a a first blush at the whole county, then they'll probably develop some goals and parameters and areas of need, and and then they will probably further focus and refine on those areas. And whether that's rural or ubiquitous or some combination of of the two, you know, it's hard to say.
I mean, kinda like the focus of the whole county thing, of course, they would do this broader analysis to, you know, and then figure out where the pockets that need or that they could help, and I think that's the same thing that we kinda have to focus on, is like down by down by my area, Midco right now is doing a bunch of projects and and I think we're the area that they're first going to, you know, kind of expand into, and, and so I think just like with the whole city, we can't, we obviously couldn't just boom, bring this to the whole city, but it's going to be like a building process. And just like there might be some places in the city that are too rural and we might not be able to reach for quite a while or at all, but, um, that doesn't mean we can't kinda start the building blocks. Um, 'cause even, is some of the information, I mean, some of the information was so great from that we got here, but some of it, there's a big gap, um, just because of the access to information, obviously, which they can't help, but um, it doesn't make it perfect, I mean, it makes us need to go beyond to look beyond that, to see um, where we can start building and where we begin the process, and yes, it's not feasible to bring every home in the city this right now, but it doesn't mean that we can't begin the process and get a certain number of homes added, and I believe there's a lot more un- un- and underserved than what's reported, but just like they bring up that they only have access to this, this information, and that's not gonna provide them all of the information. So, I don't know, I think it's a start, and that's what we have to think of is how to start the process. Um, 'cause obviously, we're not gonna just boom, um, get everyone into, you know, better internet right now, but I think Mid Midco is already trying to do this. As far as I know, Century Link is only interested in the businesses, and it even seemed from the report like they want to time that out at some point, like they don't even want to continue that.
Century Link's really had a moving target of priorities over the last five years, it's kinda been hard to predict where they will will go next.
That was, that was an understatement, I think every five, each year, they've changed their priority.
Trying to be a little.
I don't think they know what they wanna be when they grow up, yeah, so.
I've heard just sad things from people who know people who work at Century Link, and I've just been, just been saddened by it, just because you want people to feel excited and, and just interestingly, like your survey, when you did the survey of the businesses in the area, how many of them were Century Link and how many of them were Midco?
It was actually about a, probably forty percent were Century Link, so Century Link's doing pretty well in the business market, yeah.
So, assuming the consultant, whomever conducts the survey for the Anoka County uses the same methodology that you did with, if one resident in a census tract is served, they get to count that whole census tract as served. So, their studies are gonna be pretty underreported as well, so it seems like we need to take things into our own hands.
It it depends on how they, um, they run the survey, if we get an address, then we can put a pin on the map versus that census tract block, and we can start to shade and 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 kinda build mass that way.
Okay.
That that's the big thing, I think if anything, you know, one point to drive to the county is maybe here's the lessons we learned from our study.
Sure.
You know, address specific location, that's what the FCC is moving to with their new speed reporting, is there will be address specific location reporting, and then there will be a challenge process where, you know, Joe Consumer, um, can go on their speed test, submit a report that I'm subscribed to this and I'm only getting that and 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 that sort of stuff. Um, that's years down the line, I think, you know, it's wise to kinda try to get ahead of that. Um, but that that's really the key in all this is is dots instead of blocks, you know, just to kinda boil it down.
You you wouldn't necessarily have to speed test.
Let's talk about why that's important, because right now, it's only showing a couple hundred homes who don't have broadband, and if these surveys found four hundred more, then you might be able to get a big pile of grant money, so. Uh, so it's really important to do those surveys by address, yeah.
So, so if you had a neigh- neighborhood of twenty, thirty homes, you'd only have to have a speed test from one or two of those homes, right?
You'd like to get a very large percentage if you're gonna go.
Yeah, we wanna get like a th- a third, because that one or two homes might have a bad reading just because they have a bad wifi router.
It's really hard to push.
We wanna get enough that we know it's real, yeah.
There there's a lot of things that that companies will use to fight challenges like that. You know, you can't prove if it was done on a mobile phone from the garage sixty feet away from the router, you can't prove if they have a twenty dollar, ten year old Walmart router, you know. So, to co- overcome that, you have to, you have to overcome that with numbers and mass.
Okay. Have you consulted with other cities that have under taken a survey like we're talking about?
Yes, and we've successfully, I don't know that I've done a cable one yet, but, you know, back when the bar was kinda twenty-five-three, just a few years ago, we did a number of cities where we held wide scale speed tests and proved that they weren't delivering twenty-five-three, and that's the same blueprint we would follow here.
How how is that physically done? I mean, w- w- how how do you do the speed test? I mean, how do you do speed tests, but?
What we do is we put it online on Survey Monkey, and then people, and then what you do is we give you a very simple link, and you can put it on Facebook or on your website or anywhere you want, you can email it to people, they they pop on that link and it takes them straight to the speed test, and then, and then all they do on the speed test is they push one button and they get the answer.
Yeah, and they have, the key is they're, they have to, they have to, you have to get them to enter their address, that's that's the big.
But we're not relying on them to say, oh, my number is this, my number is this, they're actually doing a test and and.
Yep.
Yeah, and out of the test, we only need three numbers, it gets latency, download speed, upload speed, but we, so we need those three numbers, so, and their and their address.
A a lot of times, the 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 challenges and speed tests that have been most successful, they had a broadband committee and they had one or two really passionate people that, quite honestly, just went knocked on doors.
Locked on doors and called.
And called and pestered people and annoyed people until they got.
Unfortunately, the time of the year is getting bad, because one of the places that we see this really getting done well is when the schools get involved, that we're about ready to not have school anymore, so.
Yeah, we do a great.
Uh, but school, school, school students want good broadband, they go home and they go, mom, take the speed test, so, yeah, that that works.
Well, and the people who are underserved.
The people who are underserved should be motivated, yeah.
Yeah, they may not have the ability to.
Yeah, they're not gonna.
Do the tests, they're not doing it, yeah.
Your broadband problems.
Hello, what'd you say?
Bad enough that they can't do a speed test on on the on the whole, but, yeah.
Um, do we know if the if the county's considering doing a speed test as part of their survey?
We don't know, but I would be surprised if they don't.
I'd, if it's like Isani County did, they did not do speed tests.
Oh, that's a shame, that's the most important part, yeah.
And I I think the same firm that did Isani County is doing in Anoka County, that doesn't mean they're going by the same set of guidelines, but, um, I know they did not do the speed test in Isani County. And I think they came up with a project design up there to serve the underserved areas with like a hundred and eighty million dollars.
So, setting up a speed test for a community, what's all involved? Simple?
Setting up a speed test, what's involved there, Doug?
What's that?
If we wanna do a speed, just for example, we wanna do a speed test our community with, look, we have forty-seven hundred passings, what, how would that be done?
Um, I would go ahead and build the online speed test for you, and then your job is to talk people to taking it, it's really that simple, so.
I think you said it would take you about a half hour to build that.
Oh, yeah, it's real cheap, I, you know, this is, this'll, this'll, you know, we'll charge you a hundred bucks for putting it on.
And then communicate to the residents, that'd be the, the real key.
We've not had real good luck with surveys or of any kind, it's, somebody has to call, somebody has to knock on doors.
Twenty percent.
Oh, no, the key is to get them to take it, that's the hard work, and unfortunately.
How about getting a notice in the schools before the kids go home for the summer?
When they're home wanting to download and stream all.
Bingo, yep, you bet.
The only way we're gonna do is direct mail, so, that's what the county's gonna do.
The school can still reach all the kids.
I mean, I'm not saying you don't do direct mail too, but if you wanna start it, it's the, it's the kids that eat up the bandwidth.
Well, it's it's, to me, it it it's marketing, you know, i- it it's to the residents' advantage to participate.
Yes.
'Cause it's only gonna sh- show what we need better, and like you said, getting residents to kick in their address, that, there we just lost half our service, so.
Yeah, we lost more than half our service.
But but that, but that's what's needed, it's 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 critical to that need, so, but I think educating them on why, you know, just not, here's a survey, let's do it, here's the reason why, so.
But the people who have the service that's good are gonna be like, why do I need to do this? Why do I wanna do this? I'm happy with mine.
We don't wanna tell them why, it's not gonna help them, it's not gonna hurt them either.
But you don't want the people with good speeds taking the survey, or the speed test.
It's, I'm not saying it's not a problem, I'm just saying that it's, you know, my I I'll, my neighborhood, they just put it in. I mean, we never got put in, and we were built in oh-five, we just got put in starting last fall.
Well, but but if, but if they don't respond, that tilts it the other way, to show that we have a bigger need, so.
Yeah, that's what he says, you don't want the good people to respond, yeah.
So, if they don't respond, that's.
Yeah. But the address is gonna be key, I mean, we have them stand here every week and tell us they don't wanna give us their address, so.
But to me, I mean, back to my point made earlier, I think if there's enough response, you know, maybe ten percent of the neighborhood, theoretically, they should have close to the same.
The the problem is, is is ten percent will tell you the story, you need twenty, twenty-five at minimum to kinda get a successful challenge through.
But we're way ahead of only having one out of a census tract right now, so, that's way ahead.
So, you take a multi-pronged approach.
Right.
You have a link on your, on on the city website, you know, obviously, those are gonna be people to use it, you send out direct mail flyers, you ask the kids in the school, they they put it on something there, you just throw it out there and see how much sticks.
Everybody that comes to a council meeting to.
You ask everyone to.
Oh, we have, uh.
What happens if they've multiple, if they do multiple speed tests, can you do multiple speed tests, Doug?
That's why you need the.
That's why you need the address, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, and if they do, that's okay, but we don't, but that, you know, it doesn't count, it it doesn't help, and it doesn't hurt, but it doesn't, we need, we need different addresses, yeah.
One of the.
Oh, you know, one idea, I I've worked with a town who in the summertime got the kids all fired up, and they went around to talk all their neighbors into taking it, so, you know, there's some things we could try here, so.
Yeah, and we also have the newsletters, and we have Booster Day that we can hand all flyers during the parade and have a booth set up.
You know, I I think this should be a continuing article in the newsletter, and there's gonna be a general article on this, uh, that'll go out the end of June, so we'll start with that and just kinda get everybody to try to be educated, and then we can define what, exactly what we're gonna do and publicize that, and maybe we send out a couple of special newsletters too. That's gonna reach every household, so.
The QR codes are great, like, we've, we've seen, uh, www.eastbethel.mn-speedtest.com, you know, like, or kachunk, and it takes you right there, so, I mean, whatever you can do to make it easy will help.
Yeah, first it's letting them know, and two is convincing them to do it, so.
Well, letting them know why they need to do it.
We'll just let them know, letting people know that we need this information.
And 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 like you said, educating them on the address, 'cause I think, Doug, when, it was just a couple months ago, we had a speed test up where, like, half the people, we had like a tremendous amount of people sign on, and then half of them quit when it said, enter your address.
Yeah.
It's, it's educating on why they need.
Would would you need their exact address, or or could you go by street?
I don't need their name.
We really do.
I need a house number and a street.
You do need a house number.
'Cause it, 'cause that.
Without a house number, we don't know how to put a pin on that, right?
I can't, I can't put it.
And people think that somebody's gonna start calling them to sell them cable.
Yeah, that's.
Or or broadband, whatever.
No, this will not be used for any marketing purposes.
You don't ask for any other contact information, though?
Nope.
No email, no phone?
Email, no phone, no name.
I think if you say that, it's clear.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do, mail you something? No mail stuff anymore, so.
If it's communicated the right way, and to talk about the benefit to the, to to the resident, I think they'll respond. I'm wondering, though, given that you didn't talk to a ton of businesses, does it make sense to have some sort of a task force to connect with the businesses? Because would they be a larger, a large portion of the the service, or of the, um, that they'd utilize the broadband?
They'd be big users.
Doug, what's your thoughts on that, like a business?
Well, we we can do, I mean, you want the businesses to take the speed test too, so the answer is, yeah, of course, so. Uh, and and, you know, if we do, if you do a speed test and a survey, we already have a business survey online, so they can, more of them can take that, and then.
The only issue there is, is.
Yeah.
The businesses are likely to have higher speeds because they're paying for it, and so.
I, yeah, I think, I think they're probably getting better speeds than the rest of the businesses, that's usually what happens.
Yeah, so, and. The only way to weed those out is to ask more questions, and if you wanna just, people will come and serve the businesses, like, if you had businesses jumping up and down and saying, we had terrible service, we're looking to get out of town, all that sort of thing, I'd say, yeah, let's let's go after the business, but this is kinda more of the, if you build it, they will come model. If you, if you get the residential problem tackled, they'll for sure build the business.
Okay.
Remember, the businesses told us that they were relatively happy.
The businesses just get sorted.
I think that, I think that they probably have pretty decent service, so.
The businesses just get sorted as a separate subset, because, I mean, is that possible in the survey, that?
Yeah, we could sort them, but that's just more questions and more filtering, and we're trying.
Well, we us- again, we usually do, if we do a survey, we do a separate one for residents, a separate one for biz, so.
Yeah, so we would have to set up.
And we tried the business one, and, you know, what we got, and that that came after a number of phone calls.
We've done that before, in-person visits is what really.
I think back to our, uh, be a business retention and expansion, how we had these subcommittees, and I think that really helped gather information.
For the business survey of this part, Doug, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we got a list from the chamber of businesses, and we sifted those out, I think it was around seventy-five or eighty, we wound up, I think, probably close to twenty responses, but.
Yeah, that's all, that's pretty ti- that's pretty typical, right.
And to get those twenty responses, though, we got ten, and then we asked the city, asked them to follow us, and heard some of the others to respond, so that's how we got the additional twenty. So, in Steve's example too, where he said if we can get ten percent of the residents to respond, and we need twenty to twenty-five percent, it's gonna be up to us to go out and encourage. So in Steve's example too, where he said, if we can get ten percent of the residents to respond and we need twenty to twenty-five percent, it's gonna be up to us to go out and encourage thirty more people. I think that's the, it'll be the key to getting the responses we need.
And the thing is, once we have it online, it stays online for as long as you want, so if we get ten percent, then you know where you have to start working, right, so, yep.
And if we get the addresses, we know the areas we're not getting responses out of.
Well, and, and I wonder too, I mean, from, from a business perspective, I mean, we definitely have, there's definitely businesses that rely heavily on, on data. But then we have a lot of businesses in the city that hardly use it at all and, and, and don't have.
I mean, to put the twenty percent in the perspective, we're looking for nine hundred residential responses, so.
I mean, it, it, it's, you know, in terms of what their priority or priorities are as a business owner, having faster internet is not important, cause they don't use it. You know, so, so whereas from a residential standpoint, it seems like it's more balanced across the spectrum of, of what the needs are, so.
But on that list that we used for the chamber list, there are a large number of those people who are home businesses who would use it.
Well, I agree.
Who do use it and those would be important people.
Sure.
And maybe if we just hit them as residents, it might be different.
Well, and that's, and that, I think maybe the challenge and the crossover there, because we have so many home businesses that we don't even know exist as a city. They consider themselves business and we do consider business and it's a business use, but in the business realm, they, they, they don't really exist, cause they're a home business, so. So in a way, they are residential, so.
So I have a question, a lot of residents have, um, because they have bad, slow internet, they purchased in, um, some high-tech stuff. Some boosters and extenders and other, I, I don't even know what they're called. If you did the speed test on them, would you want them to disconnect that stuff? Would you tell them to do that or would they?
I want them to run it how they have things in their house today.
Set up.
Just get the full spectrum of what's out there, because if they're running boosters on cell service, um, it's not, it's not gonna blow me out of the water with what, you know. It goes from unusable to.
It's not gonna boost it that much.
It goes from unusable to usable when people are doing those sorts of things.
Maybe that's true.
Next steps, yeah.
So it would seem to me, again, that since a county's gonna be doing a survey, that we need to get our hands involved in the survey. So we get as much information that we can get and then demonstrate to the county that they really want this information too.
Yeah, there's nothing stopping you from providing them feedback and, and jumping on board and.
Jack, when are you meeting with them? Did you say next week?
No, it's, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get together here, he just sent me, he's the contact person in the interim for Samantha.
Yeah.
I'll get up with him as soon as this meeting's over and see if we can arrange a meeting as soon as possible.
Okay.
That must be step one, yeah.
I'd, I'd just like to say that. Mention to you, I mean, I've been involved in. From the questions you ask, I'm gonna make a few corrections and to the report and I'll issue you a final report real soon. And then you can get that out to the public, I think that helps, so.
I, I've been involved with government in the city in different levels for a long time. I've seen a lot of reports, this is probably one that I felt good about the money that we spent. It was.
It was eye-opening.
It was in-depth, very nice work.
We aim to please and we try to write it, I know it's a, it's a hard topic for a lot of people, so, you know, trying to put it in plain English and, and make it so people can understand is definitely a top priority for us. Well, thank you and.
Thanks, Owen.
Jack will be in touch, I'm sure, and let us know, um, how we can keep the train rolling, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chris, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you all, it's good talking to you all tonight.
All right. Oh, yes.
I love that shirt. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks. All right. Moving on, item six, city council report. Who is going to?
Uh, we've done a couple of things over the past couple of meetings, we, uh, approved a pl- pl- preliminary plat for Prairie Hills. Uh, be a sixteen-lot acreage addition, uh, approved a site plan review for Oak Ridge Auto Body up on the north side. And we let out a request for proposals for animal control services. And we approved for the ice arena, various projects that will get started this summer as far as improving the interior, painting, cleaning, et cetera. Um, Booster Days coming up. It's al- al- almost summer, we're already halfway through May, so we got, what, a month, approximately two months, I guess, until Booster Days, but.
Steve, anything else?
Any, anything else from council?
Nope.
Anything you wanna ask the council, we're all here. From an EDA standpoint. Time's up.
I love it.
I'm not digging for it, so.
Yeah, boy, boy, I should've come prepared. No, I don't have anything, have any questions for the council?
Nope.
All right.
You know where to find us.
All right.
I think, I think the only thing I wanna just, um, add i- i- is, you know, now, now we've received this final report is to, um, have discussion with the Chamber of Commerce as well as what's going on. You know, we, we've tried, we try to update them every meeting, um, about what's going on. But, you know, I, I can kinda see some of this, particularly when you get to the survey is, you know, we might wanna draw on the resources of the Chamber of Commerce as well. To, to get them to try to get not only their members, but other businesses in the community involved, so.
Right.
Uh, use, you know, use them to everyone's advantage, so.
The next chamber meeting is a joint one with Saint Francis, so that might not work, but July's, oh, that's a minute or a.
But I think, I think, cause I know there's, I know there's been a discussion about having a liaison between the city and.
Yeah.
It, it's just to keep that communication back with the chamber about what's going on.
And that's what, you know, we do, we always ask.
That's all I got.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing else, so make a motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.